Ready? We're good. All right. I can go ahead and call to order the city council workshop for August 12th, 2025, 5:00 PM. Let's start off with any public comments. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. We have two.
Go ahead.
Gabriel Peralas.
Mr. Peralas, SBA.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for having us here for a couple of minutes. And I really came today with the intention of sharing a little bit about where we're at so far in terms of SBA and our role for disaster recovery, disaster relief. Of note, I want to stress the importance of the upcoming September 4th deadline, which is less than a month away for those that were impacted and those survivors that would like to apply for disaster loans at, again, a great interest rate for them to hopefully be able to get themselves back up and going. As well, I just wanted to give a quick update, and I'll share that first before I go again into a little bit about our programs, just really briefly for those that aren't familiar with it. But as of today, this morning, 8:00 AM, the latest stat for SBA was that we had over 1,200 applications, and we were just $20 short of offering over 10 or of meeting $10 million of funding that we've approved for those applicants. So that's what we had as of 8:00 AM this morning. And again, I fully expect that by now, we would have hit that $10 million mark. So just wanted to share that with you all and continue to share for those that were impacted that we still have a little bit of time left. We're really counting on our partners, again, our stakeholder partners, to continue to assist us and offer us the ability to share our information through their networks, whether it be their social media platforms, their websites, their newsletters, any webinars that we can support or be a part of, to continue to share that homeowners can qualify for up to $500,000 at 2.81%. We want to let them know and get it out there. As much as I'd love to say that I can cover all the counties that have been declared as part of this disaster, it is becoming a bit more difficult as our county list continues to grow. So it really, I do want to stress the importance of relying on the partners that we have and continuing to get collaboration and gain collaboration so that we can carry out this message. Again, just in terms of products, really briefly, homeowners can qualify for up to $500,000, 2.81%, and that's up to a 30-year term with no payments, no interest for the first year. Renters can qualify for up to $100,000 for personal loss, and that includes clothes, vehicles, furniture. And the same applies, 2.81%, no payments, no interest for the first year, and up to a 30-year term. That personal loss also applies to homeowners as well, so they can get the $500,000 for physical damage and an additional $100,000 for personal loss as well. For our business community, we're still offering up to $2 million for physical repairs and damages, and that's at an interest rate as low as 4% in the term of up to 30 years. Again, no payments and no interest for the first year. And lastly, for economic injury, so those businesses that have suffered economic injury, they can also qualify for up to $2 million, again, up to a 30-year term, as low as 4%, no payments, no interest for the first year. I do want to stress that the deadline for physical damages is September 4th, as I just noted, less than a month away. Economic injury is up until April 6th of 2026. So for economic injury, we do have a little bit of more time, but those interested in physical damage applications would have to submit them here within the next three weeks, give or take. So just wanted to share that bit of information again and continue to ask and say, we're here to collaborate, we're here to help get this information out, and if we can continue to rely on the city and members of the city to get the information out, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Peralas, thank you for all you're doing for our community. I appreciate it. Please tell your crew, too. I know that they're from all over, so thank you. Thank you for being here.
Can I ask just one question?
Yes, please.
Because I hate to say that there's rumors that spread during times like this, but I heard one other day that funding sources for SBA were depleted. Can you dispel that for me, please?
So SBA, I will say, unlike most grants, doesn't have a cap on it. We don't come into a disaster and say, we're only going to offer $10 million or $20 million. And these are loans that are backed by the U.S. Treasury. So if it means that we're going to help each and every single person that's here, it don't matter if that number is 1 million or 300 billion. We were at the 10 billion mark in L.A. at the wildfires, or past the 10 billion mark. So there's really no plateau that we have where we say, stop.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely a rumor. And there's been others that I have heard, and I've been like, oh, no. So, you know, really, this collaboration and sharing our information is one of the ways in which we try to make sure that people are getting the most up-to-date and correct information as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Benjamin Miranda.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members. My name is Benjamin Miranda. I represent Endeavors. We are a faith-based nonprofit organization headquartered in San Antonio, Texas. And the reason I'm here is I want to pledge our support and continued support for the long run to be able to serve this community. One of the things that we've instituted in the last couple of weeks is we are providing free, at no cost, services to first responders, veterans, their caregivers, schoolteachers and students, and any vulnerable population that was affected by the floods with free mental health care services, wellness programs, navigation programs, case management services. One of the things that we're currently looking at is we are going to be leasing office space here in Kerrville, and we're going to put a permanent location to continue to provide these services for the community. So we are in the final stages of signing that lease. But one of the things is, I just wanted to make a formal introduction to who we are. We've been serving vulnerable populations across the state of Texas for the last 56 years and across many communities in the United States. And one thing that we say true, we were put in this earth to serve and to serve those that are the most vulnerable. And we do it like our Lord Jesus Christ did it. We're here to serve regardless of who you are and how you were impacted. So thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. I will, once we're done, I will give you my contact card, because if you have any questions, any community member, or anybody that needs our services, or you have a very unique case and just that individual's not being helped, please get ahold of me. We're here to serve. Thank you so much, Mayor, council members. God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Any others?
No, sir.
Let's go ahead and start with item 2A. Ms. Hagemeier.
Hello. Thank you, council. I'm just going to kind of piggyback off of our two public speakers, giving y'all an update for where we stand. Right now, with FEMA, we have 3,000 valid registrations. 1,292 inspections have been issued, and nearly all of those have been returned. FEMA for Individual and Household Program, which assists with critical expenses that cannot be covered in any other ways, they provide enough money up to the program limit to return your item or service to, may not be exactly where it was, but kind of where it is right now. There are 546 eligible cases, and they have awarded $6 million at this point. Housing assistant referrals are at, there are 314 that are eligible at 3.9 million. For the Red Cross, they have 115 overnight stays, emergency supplies to nearly 2,000 households, 163 immediate assistance cases, 484 home damage assessments, of which 319 were major or destroyed. And they are also assisting with the Goodwill that has clothing for free over by Hometown Crafts over there. They have a second Goodwill store for that. We have the Disaster Relief Center at First Baptist Church. They are there from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Mental Health Services, MHDD, has seen 12,000 visitors at the Shrinor One building. And we are right now working with Kerr Together in our next step at case management. And we're working on our messaging and assistance for, to get that information out to the citizens. So just so that y'all know, those numbers are Kerr County, all of those numbers from FEMA and Red Cross, that's Kerr County together. They don't break it out into Kerrville.
Kelly, do you know if there are still places available for teams to sleep?
Yes.
Other than in their car?
There, we are still working on, whenever we have those cases come up, trying to find those, so.
Who would they contact?
You can contact me.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
And I, we can get with our sources between KEDC and I. We can get with our sources to see what we might be able to do. We do know that that is something that we're going to need to continuously talk about as we rebuild, and large amounts of either volunteers or our registered, our VOADs come in, and they help with rebuilding.
Okay.
So.
And did your email change since you moved over to KEDC?
No, no, no. I'm still with the city.
Okay.
So, yeah, so kelly.hagemeier@kerrvilltx.gov.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Hagemeier?
No, thanks.
Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Item 2B, Kerr Together update. From Mayor Todd Bach.
Mayor, council, good evening. Todd Bach, Kerr EDC, here to give you a little insight as to what Kerr EDC has been working on over the past month or so. And we continue to work diligently on the development of the Long-Term Recovery Plan for Kerr County. And we've also included Comfort in that scope of work, including Kendall County. The board and Teresa and myself are working on the framework and building around what long-term recovery looks like and working with getting information so that we can gather up all the resources that we have currently, getting together with a lot of our different community partners, all the way from the east down to the west. I can say that I'm very pleased with a lot of the organization that's going on within each individual community. They are gathering up, which makes long-term recovery much easier versus when you've got within those bedroom communities in the city of Ingram, when you get, when they start forming their own groups for recovery, it really helps because it gives us a voice, a voice that Kerr Together and the Kerr Together Task Force can listen to in order for us to get the resources, both for short-term and for long-term recovery, to the needs. And I know Teresa and Kelly are, work diligently every single day, meeting with our TIDAM supporters. They help guide us through this process of what it looks like to build a sustainable long-term recovery team. And I will, I will say this and continue to say this for many years to come, long-term is long-term, and we want to do it, and we want to do it right, and we want to do it with organization, and everybody's working with passion. And again, I'm very pleased with the way everybody has come together within their communities, and what we'll be charged with is gathering all of them up, getting them in a room together, which we are through Kerr Together from a community. It's a ground-up, the long-term is a ground-up process. As we all know, a lot of our state partners will be leaving the area soon, and what Kelly and Teresa and myself are working on is taking over that support that the community's going to need in the long-term, as well as some, still some immediate needs that you've addressed, Ms. Hughes. And if anybody needs anything at this point, we're your contact points. You go to, my email is kerredc@kerredc.com, and we share information throughout the day amongst each other. Each, Teresa, myself, and Kelly all have different points of contact for different resources, and we all together can help people get the needs that they need and continue to send everyone to kerrtogether.com. It's a resource page that we continue to keep up to date as possible, working with the local JIC, working with the local organizations who put out their own press releases and vetted through them. And as far as working with disaster relief and the long-term recovery, Kerr EDC continues also to stay in contact and work with our local businesses and get their needs. And those that were unaffected by the flood still have needs. We still have workforce challenges, hoping to continue to work in a direction that Kerr EDC had planned to prior to the disaster, because we had unmet needs in our existing community and our business, a business community prior to that. So we, we're not going to let them fall through the cracks or neglect them as well. And want to let you know that I've been on the phone yesterday with the Office of the Governor and Adriana Cruz. They have contacted Teresa and I and are wanting to put together, at the Governor's request, a local business disaster relief gathering, and we'll be working on that. Time and date and location is to come, and we'll get the programming for that put together, and we'll have resources from the state of Texas there to address the local business needs for the business community. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Teresa real quick to let her kind of update you on what the day-to-day and the meetings and what she's been working on for Kerr EDC current and the long-term recovery. Any questions?
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be here and nice to see all of your faces again. So kind of dovetailing off of a lot of what you have already heard, specific to the Long-Term Recovery Group, some of the meetings that we're holding on a regular basis, we started off in the middle of response, holding a TIDAM coordination or stakeholder meeting. Every day it started at 4:00 PM, we were at the off-site Emergency Operations Center with TIDAM, pulling together all of the VOADs in that meeting and having conversations about unmet needs, coordinating those efforts. We've since scaled that back. This week, we announced we would be doing that twice a week, Monday and Wednesday. But just this week, we also decided or realized very quickly that one of the biggest needs in the community is the long-term coordination and case management within the community. So as an individual or as a business, when you first went on to that ISTAT, that TIDAM site, to submit your unmet need, it created a case, and that case management happened within their TCR, their community resource platform. And now we're getting to the phase where we need to bring our long-term volunteer organizations that are here, like Endeavor, bring them into the conversation about what long-term case management means. So your immediate response and unmet needs are very different as you progress through the phases of disaster. And so these meetings, the main stakeholder meeting will continue on Monday afternoon. Wednesday will be dedicated to our VOAD partners and our long-term case management. Those will be our volunteer coordinators, that will be our donation coordination, and all of the people in the community that are working to ensure that all of the unmet needs in the community are being addressed. That's for both the business as well as the individuals. So that's a primary focus at the moment, making sure that everyone is receiving the resources that they need, and they're receiving the communication in the manner that is best for them to digest. We have heard that in communication, that a lot of the information that has gone out sometimes can feel overwhelming. So we're also working through the Long-Term Recovery Group to put together a communications team that can kind of compile that information and make sure that we're getting it out appropriately to the different areas within the community. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
There's so many websites, there's so many numbers, and I had a number I'd memorized earlier, on the 210 number, and that's like anything, do you still use that number? 2108953212, I think is what it was. It was, I think TIDAM managed it, and it was for just, if you don't know where, you know, call, call this number.
So we've gone through a variety of different telephone numbers and phone banks, and unfortunately, it was a tedious process to maneuver that in the early stages of the disaster. What will happen coming alongside Long-Term Recovery is that we will stand up phone numbers associated with the Long-Term Recovery Group and each of those points of contact. And so that will begin to unfold as we build out the framework of the Long-Term Recovery Group and as individuals are set with specific tasks within Long-Term Recovery. So you'll have individual points of contact through that group that will address various needs, volunteer, donation, rebuilding efforts, whether you're a business or a home, mental health resources. So there'll be a variety of different phone numbers and specific points of contact through that Long-Term Recovery Group.
But all those phone numbers will be listed on kerrtogether.com?
Correct. Kerr Together will continue to be the one-stop shop for all information. It's not perfect. We realize that. It's a kind of, it's like every other website. It's living, it's changing all the time as information changes. So we have a very small group that's managing that. The best place for you to get information would be to send it to the Kerr EDC website, mine, which is, or web email, which is Teresa, T-H-E-R-E-S-A-M, at kerredc.com. Anything that you think needs to be up there, something that's missing, our feelings aren't going to get hurt, we look at it every day. And so what we see may not be the best or the easiest way for people to navigate, and so we're obviously open for suggestions and want to make sure that the information that is up there is relevant to the community. So if there's something missing or that needs to be changed, just please feel free to send that my way.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Todd, what is your email address again? That's what I wrote.
I know.
I thought maybe it was Kerr ED@kerredc.com.
All right. Item 2C, recovery efforts. Who's going to start us off? Mr. Rice or Mr. Voits? Mr. Rice.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You know, as we kind of talked about before, we're about 39 days, you know, into this horrific event. You know, things are, you know, kind of slowing down a little bit, and we say slowing down, there's obviously still a lot of things happening, but they're starting to kind of, you know, take motion into the different areas. We heard, you know, from one of them, you know, on the economic recovery side, we are also on the operations side, so kind of the search and recovery, you know, efforts. And then, of course, you know, debris management. On the search and recovery side, you know, the EOC is still activated. We are actually having a meeting with the, kind of a transition team tomorrow to kind of look at what the next operational periods are looking like. So we'll have some more updates that we'll be able to email y'all in the community out tomorrow. A lot of the stuff has shifted into economic recovery and debris management. Debris management also includes, among many other things, is the paperwork behind everything. So again, thank the team for all their due diligence on everything that they're doing with the paperwork. That's the stuff that usually gets held up the most. But without that, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Michael Hornis for the debris management and infrastructure update.
Mr. Hornis.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you all for taking the time tonight. Last time we talked, we just kind of went over it and didn't have any imagery to kind of showcase, and I think everybody's seen a lot of this already, but kind of roll through a few of these photos while we talk about the debris. I've been involved in a lot of conversations with a lot of folks about what's going to happen to the river, what's it going to look like, right? And I feel bad, because every time I say the same answer, I'm like, it's going to look like the moon in some cases, because it really is, right? And it's certainly a huge economic driver for our town. It's the beauty of the river. It's a good portion of the reason all of us live here. So we wanted to make sure that as the debris contractors are moving through, they do it careful consideration. It's hard to look at Louise Hayes Park right now, because you're driving over the bridge, and think that that's happening, but it is happening. It's sad to say, in that little section of the bank, right there past the dam, that gravel bar is at, my boys used to just run into that, those woods. I wouldn't see them for two hours, and they probably wouldn't be 50 feet away from me. But those are great climbing trees, and they had fun in them. And now I could see them half a mile down the river if I'm standing at that dam. Riverside Nature Center, that picture on the left, that's got a, there's a lot of things that had to happen down there, none of which were, none of which any of us wanted. But the impact of that is that that's also a section that just kind of looks like scraped bare earth, right? So that is a section in town that had a considerable amount of debris under that bridge, vehicles, search and rescue spent a long time down there. And TechDOT had to get under there and figure out if the bridge was safe. And they went down there carefully as they could, right? But it's hard when you're ripping trees out from underneath, RVs and all the other debris. So I just want to show that. That's the updated photo from there. And then Camp Meeting Creek, where it joins to the Guadalupe, there used to be a bridge there. There will be a bridge there once more, a little while from now. But that's actually probably the biggest piece of the river trail that sustained damage, so far as we can tell. And Jay Brimhall, Parks Department, has been going up and down that river trail with his staff this last month, and it held up really well. And so I'll take the wins. Small wins are great for staff, for us. This is a shot just below Nimitz Lake. As Dalton alluded to, search and rescue is continuing to look for those two missing persons. They were out at Nimitz Lake today, conducting some of that search and rescue. This is a shot of our debris removal. That is the intake facility for the water treatment plant. So we talked about last time, it's just inundated with debris. We pulled a truck out of that area as well, and about, I think we went 50 to 75 yards back, just removing debris that was a cause of the flood. I note in here that it comes through as a star request. A star request is when you, if, there's two types of public assistance projects. There's the emergency project, which is now, or when it initially happens, and people like TIDAM, state agencies, they will take it on as a project. And then they will take on that 25% cost share, and FEMA pays for the remainder. And that's to address the emergent issues that are health, life, safety, those kind of things. And so this was one of those projects. So this is entirely run by TIDAM in conjunction with our staff, because they had to get in there and clean out all the debris. But that's something that's not really going to cross Julie's desk in finance, which is a blessing, because those are big bills. Every one of these little projects has a hefty price tag. So staff has been working on the plant. They are done with this dredging project. I think we're going to start turning water pretty soon. And so there's been a lot of comments and a lot of concern about, like, the water's not in good shape. The water's actually in really good shape. And so, you know, if you imagine, this stuff, I mean, it came through and it went, right? And so it cleared out a lot of things, and staff's going to monitor it. We're going to continue to test it, and we're hoping by the end of the week that we'll be off stage four restrictions and back on the water plant, up and running and moving This is my afternoon, just about every day, out at Loop 534 at the soccer fields. It's probably hard to see, but there is just tree debris and construction debris and white goods, which are recyclable materials, kind of strewn all throughout. If you haven't gone to check it out, it's an awesome site in that it's just so much Here's another shot of it. Those are refrigerators, ovens, washers, dryers, and just an excavator behind it, moving through that woody debris. They have to, they bring it in. A lot of times, people do their best to separate it all out into separate piles, but it doesn't always happen. Can't expect that out of folks entirely. And so they separate those materials out again when they get to the site. And we didn't get a chance to talk through numbers last time. And so TechDOT was the first group that was able to get started. They got kind of, they were a few weeks ahead of the Texas Department of Emergency Management in terms of how they could contract. They already had debris contractors. And so they have accumulated about 80,000. And so they have accumulated about 80,000 cubic yards of debris, which is a big number. TIDAM has two contractors, one who's working west of Thompson Drive, the bridge, and the other going east to Center Point from the bridge there. And so all in total, as of yesterday, they'd done about 115,000 cubic yards. Now, the next question that came up at my meeting was, do we know how much debris there is in total? I don't. A lot of factors are involved there. How much debris is going to be taken? How much debris is going to be left? Private property owners might say, no, I don't want you to take anything off my property. I'm just going to leave it here, right? But a million five cubic yards? So that's 10%, you know? So still a long way to go. TechDOT did announce that they probably are a few weeks away from mostly being done. They've managed, they just do their roads. They just do state roads. The other two contractors do city, county, and some private roads as a part of theirs, private roads that have access, public safety access. And they have started now to do what's called PPDRs, private property debris removal. So I'll get into that here in a little bit, but essentially, most of this is on private property, right? There's a very limited amount of this that's in the public land. Don't feel the need to read this. They are hiring folks to help monitor the debris collection. I've left about 50 of those flyers out front at the admin desk out there. They're looking for folks to help them, and this is, you go, people would go out, they would monitor those folks. They're picking up debris, you put it in GPS, make sure that that debris actually gets to where it's got to go. There's a lot of people watching and doing and making sure that it's all being done above There's a phone number right there that you can contact to get in touch with them. There's a website for the debris. There was a QR code, but I'm not smart enough to put that on there. But it's on the flyer outside. And it says it's $1,300 weekly, so it's not terrible, you know? Then there is this, private property debris removal. I can't read that myself. But this is essentially what has been going out to folks and kind of indicating where they need to go to sign up to have that debris removed from their property. And so there's three locations, Ingram Volunteer Fire Department in the lower field behind it, Center Point Volunteer Fire Department, and then Vineyards up in Hunt. So they have three locations. They asked us to talk about it specifically because they hadn't had a whole lot of participation here at the city. And I think that stems from a few things. I think there's folks who already got it moved out to the street and they're done. They're good to go. We had a lot of volunteers coming in, moving it out, or took it already. But wanted to make sure we highlighted that, and if folks need someone to come take their debris out, they can go, go to any one of these three locations and sign up. You can't just walk in, though. You have to have kind of a lot of information. It's a federal project. So you got to, if it's your house, you know, your deed of trust, your driver's license, proof of property ownership, basically. And you don't need all of these things, you just need some of those things. There's a number down there at the bottom to contact them as well, and you, they will get you started setting up. And that number is 210-750-3099. Let's see. That is all I have. I have been, I can assure you that the soccer fields will look in very good condition when this is all over. That's part of the deal. I have to restore it. It'll be restored better than new, is what I've been told, so I'm holding them to that. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to any questions you have.
I want to make sure I heard you right. We are hoping to have the water plant in operation soon.
Yes, sir.
By the water testing comes back clear and no other debris is found within the intake system.
That is correct. And we will provide notification out to the public when we're getting ready to do all that. It's not on now.
Any other questions from Mr. Hornis or Mr. Rice? Go ahead, please.
I do, okay. So this pile of debris, is it drying? What will happen next with?
Well, there's a couple of things that they're doing. The, the, the air curtain incinerator we spoke about last time, right? That burns that wood. That wood has to set for 60 days before they can do that. Or they can chip it. So they have a grinding machine out there. It's, it's hard to see it, but it's that on the left there. So they are grinding, and then they have to have a final disposition site for that. So they have to, they're giving this, or paying someone, I think, to, to take that chip, right? And so each one of the contractors has to have that, and they have to have that for everything that they've got. So it took a little while to figure out at the, at the, at the dump, was it better to take it to the facility here or to transport it all the way to San Antonio? And that was a lot of back and forth, and it's a lot of dollars. And they're going to make thousands and thousands of trips. And so, yeah, they're, they are chipping it now, and that's the two processes to remove it. Chip it and then to burn it in that air curtain incinerator.
Wait for it to dry to chip it?
You don't have to wait to dry to chip it. You can just chip it.
A lot, I did not know, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a general question, and I don't know if it's for you, Michael, or for Todd and Kerr EDC, but is there still a place for volunteers to sign up?
Yes, so on the Kerr Together site, there's a section in there that says, "I want to help."
Okay.
And then there's a section in there that says, "I need help."
Okay.
Right? And so it kind of, it, it takes care of both. And so it asks you to, if you want to help, what are the resources you have? How many people? How long? What's the duration? Where are you located at? Are you local? Are you coming in from, from far away? And then for folks who need help, it's just kind of the reverse. I'm out here on my property, it's just me, I've got a bunch of debris in my backyard. Can someone come help me bring it to the, bring it to the street? Or better still, contact these folks about the private property debris removal, and then they'll take it out of there.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question about the trees. Driving across the Sidney Baker Bridge, you can look over downriver, and all the trees are laid over from the park. Are they going to, I know they've got some, Jay, thank y'all for marking the ones that can hopefully be still alive in blue, but are the other ones just going to come down? Are they going to stay or is just?
So we had the Texas Forest Service Arborists leading kind of a charge for us, and they marked within the River Trail and the parks, 2050, 2080, some trees to stay that were adjacent to the river, right? FEMA has kind of a guideline that if it's over 30% and, or it's cracked, or more than X percent of the bark is removed, things that would lead to the death of that tree, or if the root system is pulled up, like everything you see right there past the dam, it just looks like a carpet pulled up, right? Those aren't salvageable. Now, we've, we've talked to the contractors about taking 20 or so trees from each of the parks and setting those aside. We've gotten so many calls from people, oh, we need to sell it, we need to make money off of it. I'm like, the state of Texas and the federal government are paying the bill, and I'm just going to say thank you. Now, we can save some of those trees, and you all can decide what you want to do with those. But we didn't want to create too many competing interests because it gets complicated really, really fast. And so we're trying to save as much as we can, but there's a, there's a, you know, the recovery phase, and then there's the mitigation phase after the fact. And so the example I've used before is, is when you drive through Bass Drop now, it looks a whole lot different than it did in 2011, right? And that was a FEMA project to replant out there. And so I think there's a lot of work ahead of us in terms of what is it going to look like? What's the shape of the river going to look like? How much can we leave? How much do we need to just say be gone? Because it's a safety issue. If it's anchored in the, in the, in the bank, it's not going to go anywhere. But if it's sort of freestanding and another flood comes through, that thing's shooting down, right? And so we have to balance the conservation with the practicality of it all. But, you know, the Texas Forest Service folks, those are your, those are the people you want out there tagging trees. Because the contractors brought me out and said, are you really sure that you want this tree to stay? And it was bent completely sideways, but it was green. And it'll probably grow up. It'll be weird looking, but I don't care. I want as many trees as we can have out there. Because it takes a long time for them to grow back, right? A long time. And so there's a bunch of tree huggers out there who are marking your trees, and I was happy to get, Jay was happy to walk around with them and do that. And, and so we'll see. It, it certainly is not going to look the way that we all want it to look in the next few weeks.
I commend all y'alls work, so thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Working hard and it shows.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Hornis. There's no need to go into executive session, so unless y'all have something else to discuss in our workshop, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn us at 5:42.